Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to the board meeting on January 27th. Just a reminder, if there's an emergency, we have six in the nearest Texas, which is at the rear of the building. This is a police code. When you get your vehicle, please stay with them until further directed by service personnel. Also, if you're unsmoking, you're not smoking a building, so please do it outside. Actually, Patty mentioned Terry, I believe, as well as his past. But also for you that don't know, Toby Meyer, who lived in the village 96 years. Broke on South Ocean Avenue as a member of the Van Dorts. Little deli around the corner here called Toby's. Now, you spent half your life in this, you know what I mean?
We sure did. Before and after school. I'm sorry to hear that, because he's like a legend in the area.
He was a great guy. But he really just, I'm grumbling at me, living in Grumble at me, probably been at more than 65 years, 70 years. Doing his jockey and Suzanne and Russ, just great people, great people. Thinking he was the oldest member of the 96 years old, and I suspect he was the oldest member that fought upon. You think he saw? Oh, man. He was the last set of guys, I remember being at my grandmother's house on South Ocean Avenue, Anthony.
Yeah.
And she drives. He came up to drive around on his bicycle. You would think it was something out of like the 1920s. Bicycle, little basket, she ordered whatever she ordered and kind of delivered it to the house. So keep me at those prayers, because it was real young. Just a, like I said, 96 years, never left the village.
Okay. Request approval for the board meeting minutes of January 13, 2014.
Motion two, three. Mr. Mayor, last page, page two. The Sub County Coalition Gets Domestic Clowns Pepperade.
Right.
Is on Saturday, May 3rd.
Okay.
Main day, May 17th. Going down, we, I believe, the Nautical Festival, Irish stage, or canceled?
Yeah, we are not, our, the Riverfront Committee is working on a different event on a different day. So the Business Promotions Committee's request for that is off the table.
But this is the minimum.
Right, 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 right. It's the action.
So should we be right this now?
Well, I believe that in the discussion that we had, it wasn't the local.
No, it was still, it was still an event that was going forward with more discussion. It wasn't canceled, we wanted to save the date.
Well, this says we approve it.
To save the date.
I don't believe we approved it.
We will open that, I will check, we'll watch.
And then the next three motions, I don't believe they were approved on.
Well, the Friday to five, there's pending Sub County Precinct Control.
Well, I believe it takes a change, but.
Well, I think when we got into the discussion of all these, and the seventh and the eighth, we made a recommendation to go on on the seventh. So in which case.
Yeah, people are right, people are right, the possible vehicle. The condo days, as well as the sidewalk settlement.
Very much, you just go, if you want, if there's opportunity, just to make sure. Now, what may be accurate in the minutes may not necessarily be what happened, if it happens. But we gotta make sure that we.
Well, I don't believe we voted on it.
Okay. We can check.
Yeah, I agree, Bill. I don't think, there was a whole bunch of discussion about like five.
I think we voted, well, we, on a live after five, pending.
The dates.
You know, hold the dates open and see what the fifth precinct's opinion of the Friday. So at that point, we did, but then later, we were unsure about the seventh, because we found out that on the eighth, there was something. Well, we had already said exactly what it says here, that's my recollection.
She also goes by my notes, so I, she wouldn't have done that without collaboration, what I've written. So there's definitely a vote.
What, um, and I'm not disagreeing with that, but can I make a comment to the board that these dates are not correct?
Well, that's what we're checking, to see what was actually within the minutes themselves, to see if they're accurate or not.
Would you want to approve pending changes, or not?
Second.
Request approval to accept the 2013-14 report on the receiver of passes as contested.
Second. Favor? I have. Okay. Just, I think there's a little bit of confusion as to what's on the agenda, not on the agenda. The issue of the signboards is scheduled for a public hearing at the next meeting. Any discussion that we had about that will be had at that meeting. We will take comment, though the public can be heard, but that will be the only thing. Then it will be just a general statement, a reform of these statements. But it's not on the agenda for tonight's meeting, and again, it will be on the February 10th meeting.
Are we not also taking written comments during this time?
Absolutely, and I would recommend to anybody that has real concerns, you know, a written comment will take, will take your total common income and be within the minutes themselves and part of the record, and will be as accurate of what you want to say. So I would think that if anybody had written, had real concerns and wants to put a written comment in place, even a position by the chamber, David, if, that so, the chamber board would like to make a statement. Well, I would do, what I would do in written form, you should make the statement during the meeting, obviously, read it, and then give it in, so we don't get any misconceptions about positions there are, so. But like I said.
That's a question. You said they can comment, the public can be heard.
Yes, correct, absolutely. Good.
Hey. We have bills through the period of January 15 through the 27th. Total of $521,405.2. The five largest of those bills. UX Day Employee Health, $110,445.73 monthly premium. PSEG Long Island, $55,252.31 monthly electric, that's for three months. Marlin and Weintraub Attorneys Fair Harbor Foreclosure, $38,176.31. That is not an expense, we had that in escrow. Trius Repair F-350 Sewer Equipment, $14,326.81, that's out of sewer, out of sewer money. And JR Halsmacker, new village engineering work, $1,022.65, that's Trius month. If I could have approval of those bills?
Motion two, seven, second. Motion. Any questions that are in motion? Favor?
All right.
Okay.
I do have a couple of things. I do have some transfers, you have that on the second sheet. I'm not going to throw them, just to clean up accounts. If I could have approval of those transfer?
Second. Second. Any questions to the chairman, Alonzo? Any favor?
Hi.
Okay.
I do have one request for a, the General Fund, the Long Community Development Fund, $28,613.81. And that's mostly payroll, we'll get that back during the next week or so.
Motion.
Second.
Favor?
And you do have your cash balances as a, you ran into part of your information. Thank you.
Alonzo, do you have one other?
Oh, I do, I'm sorry, yeah. I have, and I don't have it. I know it's to send Emily to a.
I have a few, would you like to read it?
Yeah, would you mind?
A request to approval to attend the advanced accounting school seminar hosted by the Office of the State Comptroller on October 21st and 23rd. Cost of the class is $100 plus mileage to the town.
All right, that's for Emily Gaddy, and I was.
Senior accountant.
Motion. Second. All favor? All right. Okay.
Thank you, thank you for that.
Notices hereby given and a public hearing be held on Monday, January 27, 2014, 16th, 14th, Bay Street, Patchogue, New York, by the Village Board of the Incorporated Village of Patchogue to amend section 415-19B of the Village Code to allow parking by permit only on the east side of Grand Avenue from Church Street to Garage Street. A copy of which proposing local laws on file with the Office of the Village Clerk. Accept public hearing, any person interested will be given the opportunity to be heard.
Okay, last meeting, we had basically placed the same restrictions on the west side of Railroad Avenue. And as the board had spoken at the last meeting, and they agree that what we should do on the home, we should do on the others, it's not that over and back. So this is what helped the fight for parking by permit only from Church to Garage Street, basically along the Copper Beach Townhouses. Comment by the board?
Just that I spoke to several residents at Copper Beach since last meeting, and this would be a very welcome thing, but I'm not.
I think if we do it on one side of the street, if we didn't do it on this side, it would just put additional pressure on.
What's gonna happen?
Yeah, I think that, Mr. Mayor, we had several residents from the, that area who had come to us complaining about the noise and litter from some of the late night establishments in the area, and I believe this is a fantastic decision on our part.
Comment by the board? Motion two, seven. Can you, you know, the.
The mice, the east side of Railroad will still be no parking from the buildings?
No, the front of your building.
That's gonna stay more.
That will stay the way it is.
Right, that will.
The issue is not wrong.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna make one comment there. Wait, I'm gonna finish, right. Saturday night, I was driving around late, as Joe knows, and there was something going on at the Emporium, and I turned down Terry Street, and the Terry Street parking lot had more than enough spaces to take care of people who wanted to park. So there are spaces available on Terry Street. If anybody's going to the Church Street lot and there's nothing yet, go to Terry Street, you can walk your way back, so there were spaces. Okay. But if you were, you know, those blue parking signs that we have, put one on Railroad Avenue, so when people come down, they get to the end of Railroad looking for something, with an aisle, then at the other aisle, and then. Yeah, might do, do well to do that. Direct people to Terry Street. Direct people around to Terry.
Yeah, we went to Coach City the other night, parked behind Brockville.
Yeah?
Plenty of spots behind Brockville.
That should do that. Both, that way or the other way. At least send them away to the other, so they get down and they, you know, people.
Let's, I went down on the internet, I had to walk like six blocks.
Yeah. Okay, motion two, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kemp. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and board members, Richard Kemp, General Dean. Mr. Mayor, for the purpose of the minutes, I think that the speaker who spoke about his business, his name and his business and the business address should be included in the minutes.
I'll take it. Anthony?
Yeah.
Is Anthony, give me name and address of your company.
My fault. Twenty Squares, 346 South Ocean Avenue, Patchogue.
Church, or the Church Street.
The Church Street, 35, we're all in the name with you.
Thank you, Brad.
Two down.
Motion. There's a motion. Second. Okay. Um, P I D reports. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, trustees, Mr. Cross, who is Cecile. Attorney Egan, ladies and gentlemen, Dennis Smith with the Business Improvement District Report. Starting out with the Main Street grants, I don't have a lot new there. Progress is slow. We are making progress on the 6674 East Main Street building. That's the one we had the root of trouble with the front facade wall, the main wall. We're ready to go with the facade. Unfortunately, the weather's not been cooperating, so that's gonna take a little bit of time yet. Within the next week to 10 days, I hope to set up the project at 200 East Main Street. That's many health, that's an interior project. Once we get that set up, by the middle of February to the third of February, we should be able to start that project. As I said, this grant is a little more frustrating. I mean, the nine applications came right away, we approved them in pretty short span, and it's just been problematic, getting more online, getting more going. So, you know, we're gonna put a little more pressure on that now, and it's important to me to have all the projects underway by April, because I need that time to get them completed, you know, done by the end of the summer, September, the latest, and then due to close that process with the grant itself. So that is the target. We have nine total projects that have been approved, four of them are set up, there's one application still out there, and that's the point. East Main Street Sidewalk Initiative, the bid is kinda helping out the CDA with, it's a CDA initiative. CDA is gonna pay for the village portion of the sidewalks. We have a meeting with the owners that is scheduled to take place on Wednesday, February 12th, at 11 o'clock in this building. And at that time, what we're gonna do is we're gonna formalize the plan for the actual sidewalks. And more importantly, we're gonna formalize the financing, because what we need to do is we need the building owners to give us the funds for their portion of the sidewalk. That will be put into an escrow account with whatever, you know, legal documents are needed to go along with that. And then when the project is finished, it will be the CDA money and the owner's money collectively that will be paid to the contractor that's doing the, of the project. But the good news is that the start date is still for late March, early April, depending upon the weather. Quote letters, so the 2014 Hanging Basket and Garden Maintenance Program went out on Wednesday, January the 15th. They're due back on Thursday, February the 6th, at which time it will be considered. We did something a little bit different with the hanging baskets. We've actually changed the colors. We're trying to make them more colorful, and in at least two, maybe three sections, we're gonna go with what we call the signature basket. That's gonna be the four corners, it's gonna be plus the name, and if we can make it happen around 112, we're gonna do that. Kind of be the gateway into the village. And we're gonna go with a bigger pot, it's gonna be a, I think we're using 16s now, we're gonna get 21-inch pots. We checked it out, proposed the brackets, can support it. And we're gonna have just a different array and a bigger array in those areas, just to have a bigger splash as you enter the village, you know, through those streets. I think it's gonna come out really nice, it's gonna, it's gonna have a nice effect, and I'm looking forward to it.
Dennis?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Paul Foyer, the prosecutor, attorney, came to me last week. He had a couple of tickets before him regarding some signage on Main Street that is not visible.
And yet, in front of the library.
In front of the library, and there was another one, two for two hour, I believe, because of the beautiful baskets. So if, I know you don't hang them yourself, but maybe we need to be more aggressive and possibly work with DPW to have either the sign. I know there's a, there's an actual formula as to where the sign needs to be, but there were pictures taken, and you cannot see those signs.
Well, that can't be, that's something that we can rectify. I mean, we'll just, you know, if need be, we'll just find it in the home, you know, perhaps over behind the sign, you know, for that, for that basket to go. There was this one place at the library. I think what you need to do, when you take a look at it, take a hip, step back, there's a sign there. It's definitely the one in front of the library. Okay. We'll check it out and make sure we have it rectified for this, for this season.
Thank you.
Not a problem, thank you, Cecile. Where are we at? The quote letters. At the last bid board meeting, the board passed a resolution in support of the Patchogue Arts Council, who is going to apply for a Suffolk County, and I'm sure always gonna talk about this later, so I'm not gonna talk about it too much, but it's Suffolk County Destination Downtown Grant for a venue that they have planned for, I believe, the fall.
Yes.
The resolution states that the bid supports your endeavor, this endeavor, from your business standpoint, and of course, will support it financially as we support the Arts Council Act. I will put together a letter this week, and we'll have a letter of support to, to go together with the application when you submit it. And they talked about that. I actually went to the Suffolk County Downtown Revitalization Union, it was getting a no. And they, they gave a big presentation about that particular grant and some of the ins and outs, which we can discuss, you know, later on. At that meeting, though, they talked about the Round 12 County Grants. And if you remember the Round 12 Grants, in 2005, it was as a result of that county grant, that we put the decorative signing, the directional signs up, the black and white stuff that they had for all those years. Also, the road walkway and the theater walkway was part of Suffolk County Round Grants. So the Round 12 Grant is gonna come out. Applications will be out in April, they're due back in July. And we're looking for signature projects, like 50,000, $100,000 projects. Not necessarily lights and walkways, but something that'll have a little pizzazz, a park or a public restroom would be eligible. I think it's time for a public restroom. We've had the mayor and I, and the board, we've had this discussion. Their mic concerns too. How do you keep it together? Their mic concerns too, was the mayor. I mean, I'm just putting it out, there's nothing we can think about. I understand that, and I agree with you. I'm not, but I agree with it, simply, the other day, in front of a trike building, some kid picked up a planter, dumped it on a sidewalk, on Sunday morning, come down Main Street, and there's two garbage cans, especially if they're heavy. I know that. Rolled them back, rolled them back up. I just can't imagine what somebody's not gonna do inside a locked room, once you close the door, unless you got somebody standing there watching. That's, that's my concern. It's not the fact whether it's a need or it's not a need, is how do we manage the need? Your argument's right, and that was well put, and that's exactly my concern, is how do you secure it, and how do you keep it clean? So. Give me a clean up command, you know, we get somebody, but I just, if you just see some drunk in there, two o'clock in the morning, decide, you know, he loves that sick one, so take it home with him. No, I, believe me, I share your concerns, because, you know, it could be an Atari.
We had a problem with Shorefront Park too, as soon as that bathroom was renovated, right, Joe?
Yeah.
It was totally crashed, and they removed sinks out and all kinds of stuff.
Well, the easy part is, we might be able to get money if we wanted to put it up. So that part we could probably cover. What we really collectively need to think about is how would we secure it? What might be the best way to do that? And it's gonna cost something. Who should bear that cost? Maybe, maybe this should be something that goes to the Restaurant Committee. And especially with that, aside from drugs.
You know, you know, I question the real need. I mean, there's plenty of places to go to the bathroom in the village. You can go to the library, you can go to the, go to the hall. In Edgar Town, there's signs all over the Edgar Town saying, other bathrooms, Village Hall. It's all during the daytime. You know, Village Hall is obviously closed at night, but there are plenty of places to go to the bathroom at night, too. I mean, I really think $50,000 or whatever it's gonna cost, that's not the issue. The issue is security and maintenance and all, you know, we can't put surveillance cameras in the bathroom.
You know, and I'm gonna look into this a little bit more. Some communities do it, and I don't know how does you ever, how will they do it? So maybe I need to talk to Fort Jeff, to Bellport Village, and to Green Court, I think, has one, that was county funded, I learned today. You know, talk to these people, and see, how do you do it? How long is it open, and what does it take to make it work? Or is it working, maybe it's not working.
I bet they're all closed at night.
Excuse me?
I bet they're all closed at night, 9 o'clock.
And our biggest need is at night.
That's what we need, yeah. But I think the other thing too, we need to get it into, in terms of that, is that hopefully within 18 months, but hopefully less than 18 months, we'll have a decision on the parking structure, whether we go with what we presented at, the Raj Foundation, Illinois Index. If so, we go with it there. It's a great idea. Make it part of that. And then you can secure it, and you can.
We could use one down the dock as well, and that would allow us to get better use of the old crash shack. Hooked tree. So we'll think about that as well, if one thing is my lot on, you know, for the last.
But this has to be for the downtown.
Oh, that's the downtown? No, no, this could, this could, you could actually, if you, if the funding was right, you could put up two of them. So yeah, that could certainly be in the running as well.
That would be a good idea, if you wanted one for the scratch shop, because then we could get a tent in there, and then we'd pay for itself.
But, but you know, the point is, there probably isn't a need in the downtown, and then maybe that's the perfect solution, to incorporate what they, what they should have happened in their future, so. Because when that's, when that's in place, there's gonna need to be a need for security in and around that lot, wherever that is, because of the size and choose, that now you're managing security. It becomes part of that, you'll have, you'll have a warning. I don't say if you're, so. That's a good point. Well, unless there's any questions for me, that's all I have. What's your next P I D reading? It is the, the 11th, the 11th of February. Second, two, seven. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, David.
And, no, it's fine, I know your beginning message, I had sent an email out, just letting businesses know that, you know, if they wanted to comment about sandwich boards, people know there was a story that made the media on this past Friday, so certainly there were a lot of questions about what it was. They seemed to be more focused on the banning aspect than really the idea that the Trump's D Devlin's Committee is really working on, coming up with some ways that we don't have to ban, that we can make sure that these sandwich boards stay. And I understand that really is, right now, is the village's intention. Certainly, we did get some, a lot of comments over today, just from people concerned. I would say definitely the general majority consensus was that they'd like to see the sandwich boards stay. They do feel they have a need for them, but the businesses are very willing to work and come up with sensible regulations, you know. One thing, go ahead, I'm sorry.
See, they just have to look that wide.
Yes.
And see what it looks like.
Yeah, Lori brought the pictures, you know, at the media, and certainly, the, as they said on the report, the hodgepodge look of it, you know, is not aesthetically pleasing, and more concerned there is, you know, safety concerns, you know, it doesn't go the dry way.
They're all over the place.
Exactly.
They're in the middle, they're on corner, I mean, we.
Yeah, I saw one tonight on my way here, it was meeting against a fire hydrant, which I'm sure is not what the fire department wants. And yesterday, one of the businesses in town had two signs out, and the business was closed. So, you know, and then David and I spoke this weekend, and, you know, you know, I just wanna, wanna let you know how serious, you know, the situation really is. It's not just sandwich boards, it's not on television, but what do we want to look like?
Exactly, exactly. And, you know, and I, you know, coverage trusty devil made before the next meeting, we went, wanna get that committee to meet again, just so there's a good meeting of the minds. I'm sure I can help arrange that, and there might even be other people that would wanna participate in that discussion. You know, you guys.
We can do it like one morning at Rose.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah, you know, and I guess, you know, for some of the people I was talking to today is that, you know, they'd rather see us take the time to come up with the right way than to, you know, or to rush into it. So, you know, a couple of businesses were, you know, concerned that is there such a need to do it so soon or so fast, you know.
Well, yeah, it's been getting worse and worse.
Exactly.
Part of what could happen at the next meeting is we just take, test the only, take comment. Like I said, if I was somebody that is real strong, then I'd handle the comment, the legal comment. And we close the hearing and make, make a decision in the next, the meeting after that, so we have some time to take more. So I mean, it doesn't necessarily, the answer may not come out of, I suspect, because of the discussion, it probably will come out in the next meeting.
Okay.
You know, don't even have to, have to rush to judgment. I mean, this is one of those things that you do it once you do it right, and you make everybody understand the reason to the decision you make. Instead of just taking and saying, okay, they're not being able, really having the time to review the comments.
And we certainly appreciate, you know, from the chamber behalf, we appreciate the village is working with the business owners, you've taken all the input, you've included them on the discussion, so that's very much appreciated. And I know Eric from the Rest, who's a co-chairing the Restaurant Committee is here as well, you know, he might want, I don't know, he might have a few things to add in at the, at the right appropriate time, but. One thing I did get, just, you know, it seems like the consensus that they like the idea more closer to the curb than on to their stores, from some of the business owners. You know, I don't know which way we're gonna go with that, but that, you know, talking to the ones that did contact me today, that would seem to be a general thought, that they thought closer.
I think, though, that part of the problem, if it's about safety and securing the signs so that they're not blowing around when it gets windy, if they're out by the curb, there's no place to secure them.
Right.
Unless they're tying up some benches and holes and I don't know. Unless they're tying up some benches and poles and I don't think that's the direction we're gonna go, so I think that's part of the problem.
But if they're against the building, you have trees and you really, you can't, you can't... Well, that's...
Exactly.
I'll ask Peter between now and then to do some measurements.
Okay.
Do you need a certain amount of clear, clear walking space? And we're just gonna see what we want.
All right, and again, another apology, because I know the beginning about the minutes, which generated basically from the letter of request that I made at the last meeting. Surely, with my understanding when we left, that it was still kind of open, that we hadn't really set and stoned any dates, it was open for discussion, but, you know, I think Patty was right, there were motions made, and, you know, she's taking the technical minutes, and that's part of where the confusion came in. But we did have an excellent meeting this past Thursday. We had all the, you know, the riverfront represented, the restaurants, the chamber, the village, the Suffolk County PD. And so, the general consensus that came out of that meeting, and certainly the mayor and trustee were there, and correct me if I'm wrong, the dates now that we are looking to for requests for approval for, for Alive After Five would be July the 17th, which, again, it's all Thursday. We, you know, came to the agreement that all of them would remain on Thursday, there would be no Fridays. And it would be July the 17th, July the 31st, August 14th, and August the 28th. Now, when we did leave that meeting, we did know the 17th was kind of questionable because that is the weekend leading into the Great South Bay Music Festival, and there was apparently, they had also requested maybe using Thursday night as for a venue. So I know, you know, obviously, having both those things going at the same time wouldn't really work. So I don't, I guess that's, I don't know if we're gonna wanna tonight make any approval on dates yet, or there's something else thing to talk about before we finalize, and, you know, I'm really leaving that in the hands of the village board at this point.
We can approve pending the 17th. We just get those other dates solid.
Oh, absolutely, get the other dates.
And are you still having the automobiles on the 8th?
The 8th, right, because we did move one. Now, another thing that the mayor made clear is that, you know, we have gotten to the saturation of closing on Main Street. And even some of the business owners, particularly on the West Main Street, they also agree that maybe we close Main Street too much, and somebody seems to interfere with their business. So even Lori Belmonte from the committee still wants to talk to her committee to finalize that, and certainly the dates that we're requesting for those, July the 10th, the Friday, for Family Fun Night, and August the 8th, the Friday, for Old East Night, is still the dates we want to use, but it looks like we're gonna take the mayor's request of maybe consolidating those festivals to have them just on East Main Street, in front of where mainly most of the retail is on those nights. So we've also agreed, you know, the riverfront's biggest concern was how many times South Ocean Avenue gets closed, impeding their traffic, you know, people coming down to their restaurants. So we agree, other than Alive After Five, and then St. Liberata also, which is later in the season, it doesn't affect them as much, that any other event that we would certainly wouldn't be asking for South Ocean Avenue closed regardless if it's both ends of the street or not, as a way to, you know, compensate for the riverfront bet. They would accept Alive After Five be closed, but that was all they really wanted to see when it came to South Ocean Avenue. So we're still working out the details, but certainly the dates for all these is exactly what we're looking to approve. If that, if you want to approve it pending that 17th, that would be fine with us.
So what were the dates for Alive After Five?
The 17th, the 31st, the 14th of July, August the 14th, and August the 28th.
And when do you...
September the 4th.
It's a time of...
Correct. And now, another important thing that did come out of that meeting, and the precinct was okay, even though they didn't support the idea of going back to even one Friday, another concern for the restaurants was getting maybe extending it to a 10 o'clock time. The police were willing to...
At 6:00?
At 6:00. And we started 6:00, right, we started at 6:00 and extended to 10:00.
But it end...
But, right, they would agree that all service at the bars would stop at 9:30, all music would stop at 9:45, but, you know, we wouldn't be pushing people fully off the street until 10:00. It would still be kind of advertised until 10:00. So I don't know if that's something that, you know, right now, I guess more of a date situation, and certainly that might be still something that's on discussion, but, you know, certainly that would seem to be consensus that came out of our meeting this past Thursday.
Would you do us a favor, David?
Mm-hmm.
Is put that ready to, for a sharp letter for approval, and just bullet it down, each one of the bullets?
Okay, absolutely.
And for the meeting at 10:00. So we can slip away all this, right then, and we'll deal with it until we have a motion.
Perfect. That works out fine. And I know Eric, I don't know if you wanted, I mean, while we're talking about this...
No, that was approved by the police department.
Right, okay, I don't know if you wanted to hear anything else you wanted to say.
The Suffolk PD approved the change.
They, they were willing to work with us on that. I think they realized Thursday was quieter, so it's, I think, a nice compromise between using Friday and keeping on Thursday, but giving them the extra hour.
You and the conversation about redirecting traffic down West Avenue was sort of interesting.
That was actually, I think Sergeant Heller really deserved a lot of kudos, of really coming up with a nice plan of how we could help direct traffic down to the riverfront, and better direct traffic in general around the site, which we're gonna continue to work on with. And, you know, the Chamber is, you know, I'm pretty 99% confident, we haven't exactly voted on it yet, but we're going to invest, you know, about $4,000 to $5,000 to have a trolley service running each of the Live After Fives as well, to help send the traffic people down between, even some of the outline parking lots like St. Joseph's College. We're talking to them of getting their approval, that we can advertise St. Joseph's College for people coming from the west, it's the perfect spot to go. They could all sunrise, parbriding St. Joseph's, and we'll, you know, take the trolley, we'll bury them around to different places. And we're gonna include the riverfront on our advertiser for Alive After Five as well, that, you know, on the advertiser will also highlight some of the things that are going on down there, as a way to encourage people to also be used to the riverfront restaurants as well. That was their concern, they feel like they lose 50% of their business some of those nights when we run Alive After Five. So certainly, as a Chamber, we want to represent everybody, and we're gonna do our best to change that trend for them. And I don't know if there's any other questions on dates or anything, though.
Question?
Sure, sure.
Do you, do we use Briar Cliff at Alive After Five?
Well, again, we don't advertise as much as we should. I mean, certainly, that would also be another stop, like I could see a trolley using kind of Waverly Avenue as the spot, be starting at St. Joseph, a stop at Briar Cliff, a stop like right at the Division and West Avenue, and kind of circle around that way, and keep dropping people off at certain points there. You know, I think it's a nice thing to do. I mean, we have...
Can we stop by, ask?
Sure, sure, why not?
No, no, just sit there, boy, that's a great idea, you know, we always talk about trolleys here, but on a event like that, I bet you'd get a lot of use.
And we'd get a ton of use, we'd get a ton of use. And I think it's a nice alternative, you know, obviously, by Live After Five time, all the parking meters are gonna be up and running. So certainly, you know, those who might see that as a negative, knowing that there's a trolley service, I think certainly kind of, you know, could balance it that out a little bit, for those that want to avoid...
Yeah, it would drop behind, towards the alleyway or things like that.
Yeah, we, you know, we used it for the Small Business Saturday, generated a lot of interest and attention, and it just made me think certainly, you know, it was relatively, it was $1,000 for the day doing. So for that investment, you know, by the Chamber, I think it's a great public relation to the community for us to be back to.
Are they with our carnival days? Did we...
Yeah, we don't close the street fully, either, the sidewalks, yeah, like those events, Family Fun Night and Old East Night are centered around our traditional sidewalk sale days. But sidewalk sale days themselves don't request any road closures or anything.
So those days, you could...
Yes, yes.
And the same with the Always Night, that...
Exactly, the, yeah, the Patch Out Days, as they always were used to be called.
Okay.
All right, now, let's get into a few things that the Chambers are doing. We're having our first general meeting of the year tomorrow at the Patch Out Met for the Library, 6 o'clock, in the meeting rooms downstairs. It's the first time we're doing these general meetings in a specific, I mean, this will always be every fourth Tuesday of the month, at the Library, it will be a general membership meeting, and of course, we incredibly welcome all, any of our village trustees that come down and, you know, want to participate or have any, want to have any dialogue with the Chamber, we welcome you to come to that. And we're gonna do a networking event on February 12th at Rose Coffee, from 7:00 to 9:00, as a way to have members network amongst themselves, and again, we always invite our village board representatives to come as well. As I previously announced, just to reiterate, the passing of the S A S for the St. Patrick's Events will be February the 23rd at Parabel, starting at 1:00 PM. This is where we introduce our new grand marshal for the year, and that will be Patrick Moore. Patrick Moore is a very active member of the AMVets, as well as the Patch Out Elks, and Patrick Moore in Dublin is a, been a Patch Out resident now for the last, past two decades.
23rd.
The 23rd, it's a Sunday.
What time?
1:00 PM is when that will start. And as part of that, we're gonna continue a tradition that started a few years ago, have an Irish soda bread contest amongst many of the restaurants. So you'll get to sample some different Irish soda bread, and go by your favorite one to add to the festivities.
And that's at the Parabel?
At Parabel. It's at Parabel. They move it around each year, this year that they're doing it at Parabel. All right, and then following that would be the actual St. Patrick's Parade, that's March 30th, that'll kick off at 12:30, starting with the May the Road Rise to Meet Ye 5K Race. You have to say ye or Tom Keighley will give you a warning. All right, and then we, our beautification fundraiser is set, and that's always a great annual tradition, it dates back to Elie Stotiger, started many, many years ago. It's at luncheon and dinner, the luncheon's at 12:00, the dinner's at 6:00 in the evening on April the 23rd at Harbor Craft, is where we'll be hosting that event. And that's where the majority of the Chambers, you know, funding for all the beautification comes from that one event. And everybody, the whole community, of course, is invited to come down. We had a couple of ribbon cuttings since the last meeting. That meatball place made it official, even though they've been up and running for a few weeks. They made it official a couple Saturdays ago, and really had a great representation from our village board, and I thank you, that was a really, a lot of fun event, and they're certainly bringing a lot, a great energy into town. And then this, this past Saturday, we welcomed Floral Designs by Raphael on North Ocean Avenue, the former home of Paul De Taylor, and the new will be a restored building, and it's a beautiful floral shop. What's great about them is that not only did they open up a business in town, they actually moved into the community as well, are now residents of the village as well, as owners of a new business. Nice, nice people there. Very easy for me now down the street, I'll easily get my roses for my wife, my uncle and his name, walk down the street. But, yeah, we welcome them into the community as well. The parking meters, certainly, the buzz within the Chamber office has been positive, people seem to be getting it, and we thank Park Mobile, the company that supplies the technology and machines, for putting a kiosk up last Monday as an information to get the word out about how the machines work, and how businesses can use them, and how they can have an account with it that can help patrons pay for their parking that are in their businesses. And I did want to make a comment, just to say, I was very impressed with the presentation at Delphi College, at Delphi University, by the Long Island Index on the Brackets Parking Presentation. And just the fact that we were one of four communities discussed, and the room was about as impressive as can be when it got to the people that were there. You really had Long Island's top planners and movers and shakers from the Long Island, you know, Helen Williams from the Long Island Railroad, and the head of the Long Island Association, and the guest speaker was the gentleman who's...
Ratner.
Ratner, correct, Bruce Ratner, who's doing the Coliseum, and also did the Barclay Center in Brooklyn. So really, to have Patch Out discussed in that forum with that kind of clientele is good for all of us.
Well, maybe too good, though, is that when the asset representatives in Patch Out just came, it was $6 or $7.
And I did, and that was very noticeable, that every community was one, two, but when the Patch Out contingent stood up, it was like a whole row of people that stood up, and I thought that was pretty...
It was, it really was.
Yeah. And, oh, and then, just the last thing, we're all set, I know the vid, the village, and the Chamber are gonna have our little steering meeting, luncheon, this Wednesday at that meatball place, and I look forward to that. And unless there's any other questions, that's wonderful. Thank you, Graham.
Thanks.
Just one other thing, I don't know whether Lori's gonna bring it up under hers or not, but this week in Artspace...
How's the room?
I don't know if you read about that.
Do you want me to wait till my agenda, bring it up next? So on Saturday, this is the second or third time that Tracy Todd Hunter is putting together an exhibit for Black History Month, and he always has a fantastic reception that starts at 6:00. There's DJs, food, drink, and at 7:30, they'll be honoring, he always honors some people.
And it's celebrating diversity, those...
Celebrating diversity.
Those people that have shown the community that they understand it, they respect it, they celebrate it themselves. And one of them has to be in our company this evening, is Lucy, congratulations.
Thank you. Love this place.
So this blond-haired Italian lady is going to celebrate Black History Month.
With a version for us.
But really, and I think that that is the strength of Artspace, is the way they bring all of those pieces together. And they, Tracy Todd Hunter is even the character unto himself in how he presents this and how he puts it together. If you have the opportunity, if it was any like the one last year's...
It was a lot, it was a lot of fun.
But the artwork is just wonderful.
Yeah, yeah. He does a great job of bringing like a broad spectrum of artwork.
He gets us something nicely, just Brett David, Brett David. So, let me congratulate you.
Thank you.
And it should be noted that Tracy's, lives in Artspace, but he's a lifelong Patch Out resident.
Oh, yeah.
He had left for a while, I think he lived in Virginia, but he came back, his grandmother lived here, and he's got deep roots in the community.
He was a South Street boy.
Lori, that's Saturday, right?
That's Saturday, February 1st.
6:00.
6:00 the reception, 7:30 for the honorees.
Okay. Jeffrey Miller?
Thank you.
It's there. I just want to briefly report to just recommend to everybody, on February 6th and 7th, Patch Out Theater will be celebrating the 100th show of Live in Lobby, can you believe it? 100 Live in Lobby performances, yeah. So come down there, Chris Caballenco, who was the curator of the Live in Lobby series, has done a great job over the last eight years or so, and he should be congratulated, he should get a pat on the back. There are people here I see all the time, like David's always at Live in Lobby, and, you know, it's always, it's always a good night, even if you just stop by for a half hour or so, come on down, come down to the theater on the 6th, and then they're doing another show on the 7th, so it's 100th anniversary of, 100th performance of Live in Lobby. And back to parking meters. As David mentioned, Park Mobile is the company that's doing our pay-by-phone service, and these cards, David, do you have enough cards, do you need more?
We are running low, actually. I'm gonna be handing a bunch out at the meeting tomorrow, I could definitely use a new stack.
Okay, Patty, do we have some here still?
I have a check.
Okay, 'cause I have, I'm doing my pocket if you need. But these cards are available in a lot of the stores. Mark, do you have any?
No, nobody told me.
Yeah, okay. David, I gave the data. Dave, I gave him the data.
I know, I have.
No, it's not David.
Not while I'm here, I went out of them before I, I went out of my last thirty to figure out.
This card allows you to pay, uh you get the the app on your smartphone, you can pay by smartphone and you can also pay by cellphone. I've met a number of people in the village who are actually using it. And they say, yes, yes, and they're, they said it's very, very convenient, easy to use, it takes about four seconds.
Alright.
Once you scan it, once you're in the program, those are few.
Well, if they wanted to take someone, I could deliver them money.
But David will bring me over.
Yeah, I have enough, I can get more tomorrow.
So I have more too, so.
And I, I did talk, they're gonna be sending me some more, I believe, as well.
Yeah, and uh this is a really good way to pay, so if you have customers.
Yeah, I do, a lot.
Let them do that, so then you don't have to send them outside again.
No, they can.
And then you can pay.
That's right, I will.
And as everyone knows, the parking meters are working and the first week, I think this might be the second week.
Second week.
This is the second week of of transactions. Yeah, the village, uh we made a little over twenty-one hundred dollars in, just in uh parking fees, just on Main Street and Railroad Avenue. Uh and some on South Ocean, we had two thousand, two hundred and seventy-two transactions. And uh it's pretty, I think it's pretty good, I think so far, considering, you know, it's the middle of winter and uh you know, this week will be difficult, we'll make the budget because a lot of the the numbers were covered up in snow for probably three or four days.
Oh, I thought I couldn't figure that out.
So you can't expect people to feed the meters at that. And uh Mark, you see it, I mean, have you seen the difference on Main Street?
Uh I have one problem, I I mean, if people wanna pay by coin, like, right? And you only get an hour, you can't go any more than that, that's what they're telling me.
It's an hour and a half.
Hour and a half, but yeah, but I own a store that tells the women bathing suits.
Yeah.
They look around for an hour, they get in the dressing room, you think they're gonna come out? But that will help me.
I'm glad you asked that question. Because after talking to the mayor, uh we may be changing that to two hours, okay? Once, once the.
That would be great.
Once the, once the meters go into the parking lots.
Right.
There's gonna be changes to Main Street.
Alright.
So there's gonna be, probably the time will be extended to give people, because this is what we've heard, people coming for lunch and they need that little, that extra half hour really helps.
Well, really three hours for us.
Then they gotta park in the back.
Then they gotta park in the back.
He has the absolute.
Well, you can extend it.
You can extend it.
Oh, when I did ninety minutes, I couldn't extend it.
It would let you. Yeah.
So uh we're gonna, as I've said, as I've said in, since the beginning, it's a fluid thing, we're looking at it, seeing how it works and uh we really get a good idea of how it works once the meters go into the lots.
Right, right.
And then we'll be able to.
Make it at least three hours.
Yeah, we've discussed it, we've seen that 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 may be a solution for that.
Jack?
Yes.
Question that came into my office, what the example you brought up about covered in snow.
Mm-hmm.
I know that the machines have a way of being able to give different messages and things, like how, if a person comes in they don't know that we're not, so we're not discouraging them from taking, encouraging, we can still put their money in, is what you're saying?
No, 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 if it's covered in snow, there's no way they.
But how do they know that? I mean, is there a way to indicate, can it be programmed, can a bag be put on?
I had a couple of people ask me.
Because that needs to be confusing.
Do I have to give, uh put money in the meter because of those, no, I said, I really don't know.
Can we put a bag over it when the snow's covered like it?
That might be.
Yeah, somebody, yeah. They're not messaging you.
I don't know if we can program it to message if it snows and I, I don't know if anybody else does that. Maybe, you know, if the bag goes up, just physically bag over.
Spring has come.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not, it's not a lie.
No.
But if a customer comes in, you say, no, you know, on the snow, we, you know, like, we're not out there to, we don't, we don't have our code guys sitting there for people to get, you know, to get tickets.
What about Sundays?
Sundays is, you don't have to pay us.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't realize.
Yeah, it's the signs, notice, if everybody reads the signs.
Yeah, I tried to.
It should be fine, it says Monday to Saturday.
Yeah, okay.
I think it's self-explanatory.
Alright.
Um so.
Who made services, so?
We did make, we did make seventy-six thousand cents on Sunday. Probably my wife, because I told her she never the money in the meter. So uh but you know, Saturday, uh we had five hundred and thirty-nine transactions. And uh Friday, Friday, five hundred and thirty-nine transactions and Saturday was five hundred and twelve transactions. So it gives us an idea of how many people are coming into the village, how many cars move in and out. And uh you know, once the, once the meters go in lots, the the Main Street meters, the uh, the fee is gonna be raised to encourage people to park into the lots. You can't have the same price on the street and same price in the lot. But um and then Joe, Joe Keys and I did a soup of parking lots this morning, looking at the lights that are out and making sure, and and if, uh one thing about, about street lights and and parking lots, if you see there's a light out in your parking lot or in the street, call, call the village and let us know.
I've told you many times.
You called me?
No, I told, I'm here.
Yeah, but we have, we take care of it.
Oh, street, terrible.
Yeah, so uh you know, please do that, if if you see a light out, report it to the village so we can fix it. So thanks to everybody who's participating in our parking meter program and that's all I have tonight, sir.
Jack, just one quick comment. Uh even with this one week of data, it's right on forecast uh for the number of meters and utilization rates, so that the numbers that we use to justify this whole thing in the first place look really valid.
Yeah, I mean, if we, if we just, if for the rest of the year we did twenty-one hundred dollars a month, it's, it'll be, you're talking of uh over a hundred thousand dollars just on Main Streets. So just think how it's gonna be once the weather is nice and once we get all the people, you know, during springtime, the summer. I think our numbers will come in complete. That's all I have. Mr. Keys.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, fellow board members, ladies and gentlemen, not too much actually, obviously we've been pretty busy with the snow with DPW. Uh I do want to report that we've managed to get some twelve-dollar advances coming around and they were very good. They worked well, we have a decent list of guys that build it and your house. Um requesting tonight, it's not on the agenda, there should be something in the package to hire two temporary laborers at ten seventy-five an hour, they're Gene Sullivan and A J Anderson, they both worked for us before on a temporary basis. Uh both excellent employees. Um as you know, right now in our DPW course, we have a few guys out on injuries. I don't know how long they'll be out, so it's urgent for us to fill those spaces, obviously get some bodies, especially with the winter. Uh so we're requesting approval to hire those two temps.
Joe, I'd like you to add one more.
Uh request approval for Ryan Murphy to attend Stony Brook Code Conference on March eighteenth to the twentieth. And it costs not to exceed two hundred and fifty dollars.
Is there somebody else that can put in for that also?
Yeah.
Uh yeah, I've got, I've got a separate.
It's the same?
It is the same.
Okay, the one we were both saying.
Let me put it together.
Yeah.
Uh the second uh individual to attend this conference, this training program is Michael Riquel. Uh that's a motion.
Say it. All favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh I think this is the last thing. Uh request approval to send Pete Sarich to uh uh New York State Building Officials Educational Conference. Uh it's a continuing education requirement for code enforcement officials. The total cost included tuition for the conference, lodging, travel, meals, about thirteen hundred and fifty dollars. That's a motion.
Second.
Josh.
David?
Aye.
That's it for me, thank you.
Well, I'd like to do all those. Jimmy Burke. The, are you? We're gonna post it. You know, one of the if we have a public safety, is Jim Berkovich is our, we call him a director, he's actually right? And that's civil service, Assistant Code Enforcement Supervisor. Um what we're looking for is to get a waiver so we can raise his salary, the guy puts in, supposedly twenty hours a week, he probably puts in thirty, thirty-five thousand. He's here all the time. Um but this isn't for him. On approve the position of Assistant Code Enforcement Supervisor incorporated into Patch Out. The position's a part, part-time position, twenty hours, minimum twenty hours per week, makes ready for work. It started, and the salary for that will be forty-six thousand dollars, which currently makes, position is currently thirty thousand dollars. But he is here and available to me twenty-four seven. I call him at night, I call him at three o'clock in the morning, I wanna have reports of things, and he's there whenever he's asked to. One of the, the requirements is that he, he, this person, position still needs to be posted as a job worker. The position, um this was required for the fifteen minutes of village, of the village. So um motion to post for the position of Assistant Code Enforcement Supervisor for the incorporated Patch Out. Motion, motion, second.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Josh.
Okay. You can post this now.
Good evening, everybody. Well, since we are on the subject of Plaza Cinema Media Arts Center, I'll be very happy to sort of get this thing sent. Uh just to let everybody know that the film that's showing this week is Kilamina. Showing it three times a week and I believe that's gonna continue until next week.
Three times a day.
Three times a day. Um check their website for times because they vary depending on the weekend, weekdays, but they have a matinee, early evening, late evening. And to satisfy those people that are hungry for more than one movie every two to three weeks, on Mondays and Tuesdays nights now, they're showing movies at the Brick House as well. So I heard they had a very good turnout for the Robert Redford movie on Monday night, um the name escapes me right now. Uh I heard they have forty people there and on Tuesday it snowed, so this Monday, Tuesday coming up, they have um it's the movie about Lee Ullman and Ingmar Bergman, but I don't remember the name, so uh.
Can you do it well?
I know, it's, it's a long night, but uh so they're expanding and they have a lot of things going on. And then I wanted to comment on what Dave said about the two ribbon cuttings that we've had in the village this week and I I heard the same thing from both business owners. When we were at the meatball place, Paul and I were standing outside with the one owner and he said to Paul, "Look at all of this, how did you do this?" He said, "Somebody should write a book." And it was really gratifying to hear that the reason that they're in Patch Out was because of all the exciting things that are taking place. And then this weekend we met Raphael, he moved here two years ago from um
Minneola.
Minneola, uh he's been living on Academy Street and he made a decision to move his business here from Minneola. So they opened up in the location that was Paul De Taylor and they said the same thing, they said, "Look at where we are, but it's a place across the street open. It's gonna be fantastic" and made the decision because of all the exciting things going on in Patch Out. So it was really nice to hear that and see that we're attracting new businesses in the town. And since I already spoke about Black History Month, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Questy. Normally Brian, you should.
Yeah, I know. Uh Mr. Mayor, good evening. Uh request approval for Patch Out Missford Schools to use Ryder Avenue Complex for baseball, softball leagues as per list presented.
Motion.
Exactly.
Uh that's shared services.
Yeah.
We get back a lot from that, so it works out well for recreation. Uh Mr. Mayor, request approval for PYAA to use short front Ryder Avenue Complex for baseball, softball league as per list presented. It's a motion?
Say it. Second. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Request approval for ABA Sports to use Ryder Avenue Complex for softball league as per list presented. They are a, they pay to use our fields.
Very nice.
Yes, uh it's a motion?
Second.
Aye.
And Mr. Mayor, request for Blue Point Brewing Company to hold the Cast Ale Festival on Saturday, April fifth from two to seven and I've added, I've experienced some things to their application, that is to replace security by the gate with garbage cans, so we can not be leaving with open containers. Instead?
It was not last year you had requested that.
Right, I know, but you didn't put it down again. So that's a motion?
Second.
Second.
All favor? Aye.
Excuse me, Bill?
Yeah.
Uh on the agenda that came from recreation, but it's not on the R agenda?
Yes.
Was also an approval for Island Slope Pitch, is that not going forward?
Oh, yeah. Well, it wasn't, but it is because he brought a check in.
Oh, okay, okay.
So thank you for that. I saw it as well, approval for Isle, oh, we have a hole in the weekend. Approval for Island Slope Pitch to use short front Ryder Avenue Complex for their softball league. And that's Mike Kalish and we generate about forty-five thousand dollars a year from that league to use our lighted field. Second motion?
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Okay. Just difference between them and ABA, they talk to the same time?
Yeah, but ABA doesn't use the uh the lighter field.
Oh.
Sam Perry could, they use the ninety footer and the Tony, you know, pump house.
Do they play at the same time or?
No.
Or they just decided Sunday?
Yeah, yeah, much less in ABA.
What's it called?
The pump house.
Tonya Torrey?
Tony, yeah. It's like every kid in this room had a play.
To- Tonya Torrey.
Tonya Torrey.
He was named after Tony years back.
Park, Park. Yeah, it was once, yeah. It was with Ben, yeah.
Back around two thousands.
Please, Pete.
Please, what's the parade?
Twenty-sixth of April, lineup will be behind Bay Avenue School at nine-thirty, will kick off at ten, will arrive at the complex at ten seventeen. We will then have the convention with the ceremonies at ten-thirty.
And I'll try to be here at five.
It will end about three P M when I get done talking.
Are you with a formal application or?
Yes, sir, there was a letter that was, uh, there was a letter that was sent over, um probably late this afternoon. Uh the formal paperwork, uh requesting fields, times, dates, et cetera, were provided to uh Luana Maria also late this afternoon.
Okay.
I reviewed everything that they had for ABA and for the other softball league and I see no conflicts anywhere.
Great, it will be on the next meeting's agenda for approval.
Yes, sir.
Next, Pete. Next, Pete. That's all. Thank you very much. Any comments, Greg?
Uh actually, I checked the village code, just wanted to clarify that when it comes to building properties, that the Ford Christie's has discretion by resolution to amend the way of set piece.
Someone did it. Doesn't trade us gonna have to do time?
Okay, follow to be heard. Segal.
Uh Mark Segal, Blums, twenty-seventy, main street. I've got a letter from the village about garbage cans, I'm gonna pay the bill and defer it. But if you look at, there's a crap in the middle, whatever goes in the gate, looks like crap. Ours looks like, I mean, we do get stuff that, and we try to get into the garbage.
And most of yours is cardboard too, which is basically.
Well, I know.
Yeah, but you would, no, I'm, I'm not defending.
Yeah.
That mess by any stretch.
Yeah, but we take care of our, you know, because we built it and so they, you know, they help us out paying stuff and everything, so.
How many, how many stores are in?
Seven, I think so, us, Nice Columbus, um the shoe store, what's the name?
It was House Yelts.
Yeah, Yelts, Yelts, that's what I meant, Yelts.
Payless.
Payless, uh the bank, Roast, Conny Shop and VIP, the two other ones, we didn't want, you know, do anything. But I told him, "Don't throw anything in my garbage" and then, you know. We were like, Abe told me to lock it out, I think he locked it up.
He didn't even get out anymore.
So.
How was it?
He's doing great, he's coming up, uh not this Tuesday, but next Tuesday, so we can get going on this redoing of our store.
Are you ready to start with that?
Well, we got things to talk to the contractors, I gotta work with Dennis. And we're, and we're going to hopefully do it, start working in the middle, the end of February.
Here you go, Dennis.
Amen. Hopefully, and it's gonna be gorgeous. Because my sister did everything, my sister did Buffalo.
Really?
And they're, they had the top of the line to everything, we're gonna go a little lower. Because Abe didn't wanna spend that, and I don't blame him, we're gonna sell them.
I told you, I was at a conference, I was talking to the mayor of Williamsville.
Yeah.
I said to him, uh, you have a place up there called Blums? He goes, "Yes, the dentist thing, says all they sell is bathing suits." He says, "They got a line out the, out the door."
Yeah.
He goes, "When they first came in here, we thought they were crazy."
Yeah, yeah, yeah.